Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in recognition of National Peace Officers Memorial Day, which will be held on Wednesday, May 15th. The city will lower flags this day in tribute and remembrance of police officers who have died in the line of duty around the country. So, welcome to Lewiston, the second largest city in Maine, but the city with the biggest heart. And we're going to start off our meeting tonight with recognition of the Cadence Kitchen Food Pantry. And so, we have a certificate for Cadence. Just going to give you a little background on the food pantry. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that helps families in the Lewiston Auburn area who are experiencing food insecurity. Cadence Kitchen started in February of 2017 when Cadence, who you'll all get to meet in a second, wanted to find a way to give back to families in need. And their family has been delivering care packages to individuals and families who have disabilities or lack transportation for the last two years out of their home. At the end of 2018, they decided to move Cadence Kitchen into a physical location so that they could expand the resources they can provide to the community. After experiencing a fire at their original location, which resulted in the loss of everything they had, they rebuilt and are now servicing the community once again. Their new location provides food care packages, free clothing, free toys, free business apparel for job interviews, and a resource center for assistance with employment is in the works. And if you haven't been there, I highly recommend checking it out because it's pretty amazing. And Cadence is involved with every aspect of the day-to-day operations. She goes shopping for all the supplies, helps prepare the care packages, plays a role in all the fundraising events, helps sort incoming donations, and interacts with people who visit the pantry. Over the holiday season, Cadence Kitchen partnered with the Cady Academy to provide 50 free dinners to families in need. Cadence recently was the recipient of the U.S. Cellular 16 Under 16 Future of Good Humanitarian Award and the American Red Cross Heroes Among Us Award for her work with the food pantry. And she was also highlighted as a community champion by Channel 8 News. She loves being involved in the process from beginning to end and is so excited about what the future holds. The food pantry is located at 550 Lisbon Street in Lewiston, and their current hours of operation are Tuesday through Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to noon. So, Cadence, if you and your mom can come up and get the certificate? Come on, guys. You know the drill. And next, we have a mayoral proclamation for National Kids to Parks Day, which I'm just going to read. Whereas, "May 18th, 2019 is the ninth Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia." I'm sure that was incorrect. "And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors." Now therefore, I, Mayor Kristin S. Cludier, do hereby proclaim May 18th, 2019 as Kids to Parks Day in the city of Lewiston, Maine. And now, we'll move on to acceptance of the minutes of the April 16th, 2019 meeting. Second. I have a motion by Councilor LaJoy, seconded by Councilor Ray. All those in favor?
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
And now, we will open up public comment period. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. The maximum time limit is 15 minutes for all comments, and individual comments are limited to three minutes. Any public comment? Great. Public comment period is closed.
All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Councilor of Ward 2.
Agenda item number one.
Item number one, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for the Ramada Hotel and Conference Center, 490 Pleasant Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to the Ramada Hotel and Conference Center, 490 Pleasant Street.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilor Markot, seconded by Councilor Beam. Any discussion for the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Council from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 2.
Item number 2, public hearing for approval of outdoor concerts sponsored by L.A. Arts at Dufresne Plaza. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application from L.A. Arts for the evening outdoor concerts to be held at Dufresne Plaza on May 31, June 28, July 26, August 30, September 27, excuse me, and October 25th, and to authorize a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3 to L.A. Arts for the outdoor concerts contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Land Use Officer, and Code Health Officer regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Petten Gill. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Council from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 3.
Item number 3, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for the Lewiston Farmers Market Concerts. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application for an outdoor entertainment event for the Lewiston Farmers Market Concerts and to grant a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3 to the Lewiston Farmers Market Association for outdoor music concerts for the market contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Health Officer, and Land Use Inspector regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
So moved.
Second. I have a counselor, I, sorry, I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Any discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Council from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 4.
Item number 4, public hearing and resolve approving the federal fiscal year 2019, Lewiston fiscal year 2020, Community Development Block Grant Action Plan Budget, and Home Budgets for Submittal to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor LaJoy. And open it up for public comment? Link, do you want to give us a?
In a very brief summarization, we did have a public hearing on this March 28th. Since then, we did get our final tally, and unfortunately, the amount of money we were going to receive, both on CDBG and Home, went down a little bit. On CDBG, we lost $6,272 from last year to this year. The Citizen Advisory Committee had recommended that if we had either an increase or a decrease, that it be, come out of the agencies that were chosen for funding. So, the six agencies that got it received about, I think it was about 14% less than what they had originally asked for. On Home, it was a significantly larger cut. Home is shared with Auburn. They're the lead entity on it, but it was a $74,688 cut, which took us from 517,000, 517,500 last year to about 442,775 this year. And again, the recommendation for where that should come out of was the Staying Home Program, which is one that we've launched. Really haven't anybody get into it yet, but it's really in partnership with the school system where if we find a family where the children are at risk of having to relocate because they don't have adequate housing, would serve as like a Section 8 certificate for a period of two years. And so, we went from being able to fund five families to be able to fund two families under that program. And that's really the only changes from what we talked about on March 28th.
Council Ray.
So, on the resolve, I'm not sure if it's a typo, but under the third whereas, it states the end of Lewiston's fiscal year, which occurs on June 30th, 2017?
There's a corrected resolve at your place with that date changed.
You're so good, Ed. Thank you.
He is so good, so yes.
No, no, no. Councilor Markot is the one who identified the error.
I should have known.
Yes, I thought I got them on and missed one, so thank you, Councilor Markot.
Any other discussion on the council? Council Markot?
Can you restate that amount again on the home funds that it was reduced by, well, less than last year?
Yeah, the amount that, for the entire program, the amount that, as a consortium, we received $74,688 less than we did last year.
And the CDBG's minus 6272 is what the adjustments are on those six?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions from the council? Questions from the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Council from Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 5.
Item number 5, final budget public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 municipal budget. Requested action to conduct a final budget public hearing to receive citizen input and communication regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020 municipal budget.
So, we'll now open up to public hearing, so if anyone has comments on the city budget?
Hi, I'm Linda Scott. I live at 45 Petten Gill Street. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend in person every one of your budget meetings, but I want you to know that I watched every meeting. And I am just here to thank you. Thank you for the work that you've done. Thank you for the questions that Councilor Markot asked. Thank you for the questions that Councilor Ray and Councilor Lyson, all of you. I just want to thank you for the hard work. I saw some very serious discussions happening, and it is not an easy process figuring out a budget for our community. And I just want to thank you for the job that you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Eric Kai. I'm president of Lewiston Firefighters Association, and I'm here tonight to address an issue. I'm here to address an item that was added to the budget at the 11th hour. $50,000 will be allocated from fund balance to fund a study of the Fire Department. Little information is available on this item, and no substantive discussions have occurred in a public forum via budget workshops or contained in the council packets. The first mentioned publicly was last week at the end of a budget workshop, and the first written indication is contained simply as a line item in the public version of the council packet. No description, just a listing as miscellaneous. The last decade has shown an administrative and elected leadership that has been conservative in their spending, thus allowing the final position of the city to improve. The city has done an admirable job of paying down and managing debt, providing a stability that employees appreciate. Nothing is worse than the unknown for your employees. Open and public discussion is part of the democratic process and should always be adhered to. The taxpayers and your employees deserve no less. If $50,000 is burning a hole in the city's pocket, it has a better use in terms of the Fire Department. For more than a decade, the association has advocated for a second set of turnout gear for each firefighter. Quickly, this is becoming the industry norm. It is strongly recommended component to help decrease cancer in firefighters. We are literally one contamination event away from having firefighters having no turnout gear. This gear is measured for each firefighter. Currently, we have approximately 16 sets of spare gear of varying sizes. There's no way of being assured that a contaminated firefighter will have a second set of gear. 16 sets would not meet the needs of every firefighter working this evening. The absence of one platoon without suitable equipment will immediately place a financial burden on the city in terms of replacement costs and overtime. As I said, for over a decade, we've been told there is no money to help diminish our exposures. Recently, via the Labor Management Process, we started to institute a replacement firefighter hood program. This took nearly a year to happen. We currently have only 25 hoods, as money was limited for the purchase of more hoods.
So, I just want to let you know you have 30 seconds left. Sorry.
What's that?
You have 30 seconds left. Sorry.
Really? I'll submit the rest of my part. I do have some issues with the incident that was submitted to the City Council regarding the Assistant Chief Position. And will I be able to speak on the rest of this later on when the other part of the budget comes up?
So, right now is the public hearing. So, there's?
I don't see a line of people waiting to speak.
I understand that. It is policy. I also want to say there's recommendations from the Finance Committee that address the, this was, I think, part of the recommendations from the Finance Committee, so I think you could speak to it then.
I would like you to relax the rules so I can read my prepared statement.
I understand that you would like for me to relax the rules. Unfortunately, I would say, can you save your three minutes for the recommendations from the Finance Committee to finish it? Which is the next agenda item.
I will be able to finish it?
I will give you your three minutes on that next agenda item.
I'll read as fast as I can.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public on this agenda item? Back to the council. Council Markot?
I'd just like to point out with regards to the $50,000 study. During the budget process, when we discussed all of the departments, when we had our straw polls, at one point, I made a suggestion that we study the administration in Fire and Planning because we had two major positions that we were deciding on as to whether we were going to keep them in the budget. I don't know how it morphed into an entire study of the Fire Department and only the Fire Department. Obviously, that's what happened. We were asked by the Administrator if we had any objections to taking $50,000 from the unassigned fund balance for this purpose, and no one objected at the time, including myself. So, that's how we got here.
So, I just want to add that my understanding was that we were starting with the study of the Fire Department and that we would then do a study of the Code Department.
That was the discussion at the end of the previous workshop.
Okay. So, just so that we're clear, that is still, that was the understanding of the council, and that was the plan, was to start with the Fire Department and then do one of Planning and Code. Correct?
In future years, which, and that hasn't been decided.
And other departments, exactly. Okay. Council Ray.
So, just to follow up on that, there will be a budgetary implication on that for next year if we study other departments?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a way to reserve that now for next budget, so that's a line item at the beginning?
We could, I mean, you can build it into the budget the same way you did with the positions from last year.
We could certainly do that.
I personally would love to see that preserved in case there are different councilors.
Yes, Council LaJoy?
Should we have extra funding identified during the course of the year, could we start or put out bids for a review of the other departments quickly?
Yes.
Very good.
So, just before we, actually, go ahead, Council Lyson, and then I'll come back.
Wondering if Heather, if you knew, if we do the $50,000 for the fund balance, what does that leave us percentage-wise?
I had emailed that out. It brings it down right to the 10%.
So, it's at 10?
Correct.
Not below, not above, but at 10?
Correct. The exact amount is like 2771 below.
So, and I'm just wondering if you can sort of give an overview of how this kind of landed in the budget? Because it was?
Yes, this all started, of course, when we had the discussion of the requested funding for an Assistant Fire Chief. As the process went through, I think virtually every time we discussed that position, Councilor Markot suggested we really needed to do a study to see what was required, what wasn't required. And when the position was not funded, we decided, or at least I suggested that we go ahead and budget some money to do that study. The study that I would see would not only look at the administration of the department, but how the department is organized. It would probably also deal with some of the issues that Mr. Kai mentioned in terms of equipment needs and things like that. So, looking at what's been done around the state, Bangor did a study like that back about 10 years ago. Portland's done a study like that about five years ago. Both of those studies, I think one was $35,000, the other was $40,000. Anticipating inflation and other things, that's why I came up with the $50,000. I'm hoping we can get it for less than that, with the idea is to try to do a thorough review that gives us a plan moving forward in terms of all of the issues that we might need to confront with the Fire Department.
Any further discussion from the public? Further discussion from the council? Call the roll.
Okay, so this is just the budget public hearing? So, no ounce, uh?
Okay.
Council action is needed.
We'll come back to this later.
As long as the public is all set speaking, then you can move on to the next item.
Okay. So, that is agenda item number seven?
Six.
Uh, six, sorry.
Item number six, budget recommendations from the Finance Committee regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020 municipal budget. Requested action to receive and review the recommendation from the Finance Committee regarding the proposed fiscal year 2020 municipal budget.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Council Lyson, seconded by Councilor Petten Gill. Any dis, Mr. Terrio, would you like to give us a? Sure?
There we go. My name is Dennis Terrio. I'm the chairman of the Lewiston Finance Committee. We have two councilors that are also on that committee. I know I added, the city administrator read some of that report last time. If you don't mind, I'd just like to redo that and recap that for you. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to try to entertain that. Going to go with, dear mayor and members of the City Council, the Finance Committee has agreed upon the following recommendation of the 2020 municipal budget to be ratified at the May 6, 2019 meeting, which we have done. As required by the Lewiston City Charter, the Finance Committee has reviewed the FY '20 Lewiston Municipal Budget and provided our recommendation and concerns at this time. Finance Committee again takes this opportunity to remind the council of our previous recommendation regarding the FY '20 LCIP and how it will affect this and future budgets. FY '20 requests far exceed what we have seen in past years, and the current projected bonding would defeat our pay-down mechanism at a time when we are not seeing a strong for-profit business development stream. We recommend, we remain concerned with the current bidding system as it appears to favor the bidder more than it does the city. While there is likely little that can be changed, a system which allows the bidders to know in advance how much money can be devoted to an item or service might not provide for the best bid. This comment is not a condemnation of any individual bidder who we have or may work with, but instead, an observation of an area that could be exploited. We also recommend that the city carefully review each bid proposal to ensure that we maintain as much flexibility as possible in terms of timeframes and project scope, design and materials to ensure the most, the most bidders possible and more favorable pricing. Finance Committee is pleased that the Rental Registration Subcommittee has developed a program to help our residents to feel safe in their housing with increased code enforcement and Fire Department involvement. Because the Subcommittee rejected a fee-based system, it is important that the city provide some resources to make sure the program is implemented in a timely manner. Public safety remains a top priority. Finance Committee has two city councilors on our committee, Councilors Markot and Lyson. We're also both on the Rental Registration Subcommittee. During discussion at our most recent Finance Committee meeting, it was stance of members that with respect to new positions in the FY '20 budget, that it made more sense to fund the requested Fire Inspector Position than the Assistant Fire Chief Position. Timely inspections will require additional staff, especially boots on the ground. The new inspector position will also cost $62,829 less than the Assistant Fire Chief Position. We strongly urge the council to consider this recommendation. There needs to be a very detailed assessment of the current Deputy Fire Chief Position before the consideration of the new Assistant Fire Chief Position. The recent document, which you people received, the Lewiston Fire Assistant Chief Battalion Chief Justification Document provided to the council, does not provide an adequate picture of workload distribution within the Fire Department. A number of the listed items are already functional responsibilities of captains, lieutenants, and staff. Clarity of existing positions may be a better direction than adding a position. Example, a closer look at RMS, which is Record Management System, which was purchased a year ago, my understanding, with the intent to reduce management time and training reports, maintenance of work orders, inventory, incident reporting, et cetera. To date, is not up and running. Could the simple implementation of the existing purchased-ready RMS be an answer to not adding an additional administrative position? Suggestion to reduce load, shifting fire inspection duties to an elevated senior fire inspector position would release the current Fire Chief's, Deputy Chief's workload at a minimal cost upgrade. There are many alternatives that can be achieved if a team environment exists. We recommend that any future negotiations with the various unions set more realistic targets equal to what the private citizens see in their daily lives. Finding a metric such as social security COLAs and looking to what private employers require their employees to pay as a share of insurance and other benefits seem fair, given the struggle our local citizens are undertaking as they are forced to contribute to the community treasury. Lastly, our recommendations are developed knowing that decisions by the state on revenue sharing increases may also come after our budget is finalized. We should carefully evaluate any potential additional revenues, dedicating a significant portion of those revenues to reducing the property tax rate. For example, the schools have indicated some uncertainty in portions of their funding, and by rule, any budget they produce cannot be changed later should they need additional funding from the taxpayers. If it can be decreased but not increased. Thus, it is likely we would see a worst-case scenario budget. Should that occur, we strongly urge the City Council and the School Committee understand those portions of the budget. Should the local match end up being less than the average in the budget, the overages should not be spent on other items or needs not included in the original budget, but instead returned directly to the taxpayer by decreasing property taxes. Thank you for your consideration of the Lewiston Finance Committee recommendations for FY '20 budget.
Thank you.
Questions? Seeing none.
Council Ray?
Yes.
So, earlier in the budget process, when the initial recommendation came to us, I had asked if the School Committee could present to the Finance Committee. Did that happen throughout this process?
You're talking about the School Committee?
The School Department.
The School Department? Yes, we had Mr. Webster come in.
Great.
And we did speak to him.
That's great that that was taken.
It didn't change our position a whole lot. It had some interesting discussion in regards to that meeting and probably a little bit more clarity, but it really didn't change our position.
Okay. I appreciate that opportunity.
You asked, we delivered.
Thank you.
So.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Mr. Kai, the mic is yours.
I had all the parts that I was going to address. Am I limited by time on this, or?
Three minutes.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
Thank you.
Currently, we have no water safety capabilities. A year ago, two children fell in the river, one passed away. Our capabilities are the same today. In closing, the recent document the council received regarding the justification of Assistant Chief Position contains some statements I feel is important to address since the study is relative to this matter. The document provided counsel contained numerous mis-
The document provided counsel contained numerous mischaracterizations. Regardless of the statements were unintentionally misleading, they need to be corrected. I will just address but a few. Firefighters, including the reference captains, work 24-hour shifts, 365 days a year, including weekends and holidays. They average a minimum of 42 hours per week of work. All firefighters are responsible return to duty for multiple-line firefighters. If a firefighter, including a captain, are out sick, a benefit they must earn and are not given, they do not have 10 to 14 days off. This is factually incorrect. Since the reference language specifically addressed captains, I assure you and urge and welcome a review of captain's sick leave. I'm sure it will yield no smoking guides regarding the abuse of a city benefit. As for the quote I speak, "Members are assigned specific tasks but limited accountability due to the contract language that makes management responsible for continuous oversight," was the quote in that article. All I can say is that we do the job that we are allowed to do. Communications is key, and I would have to say that it is currently lacking. While I don't know or would hazard to guess why, I will leave it as lacking. I would just ask that the association be provided one example of someone either refusing to do what was requested or hiding behind the contract. It simply does not happen, and frankly, it's insulting. Captains are the third-in-command of the fire department. They oversee five lieutenants on a daily basis who oversee two firefighters on the apparatus, three firefighters for the latter lieutenant. When the chain of command is utilized, things flow smoothly. When the chain of command is circumvented, for whatever reason, is when things are much less productive and certainly less efficient. If we are looking for accountability, then the chain of command would be the recommended starting point for all of this. It works on the fire ground. It needs to work in the fire station. These are only a few examples. There are so many more that could be done. If you want to do a study to help the citizens in the fire department, perhaps it's time to discuss the lack of proper EMS transportation coverage in the city. Both the city and the firefighters' association have been long aware of service staffing of the current provider, and it is sorely lacking. This study would in fact be a worthwhile endeavor and something the association could provide in a cooperative manner at no cost through our international. We did it in 2002, and I have copies if you are interested. It would be nice for once to sit on the same side of the table. If so requested, I'd be glad to provide this written commentary. Thank you.
So, are you willing to provide your full comments to us via email?
I will provide them to you.
And that study as well would be great.
Yeah, I believe the city already has a study, but I can get you another one.
Okay. And if we could keep track of the things that Mr. Kai lists to include in the study that we're talking about, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion, any other public comment? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number seven.
Item number seven, resolve approving the fiscal year 20 budget for the Lewiston School Department. Requested action to approve the resolve approving the fiscal year 20 budget for the Lewiston School Department.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Discussion on the council. To the public. Back to the council. Do we want to do a brief review of the?
I always suggest that the school superintendent.
Mr. Webster, if you could join us at the front.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Bill Webster, Superintendent of Schools. You recall that, I guess it was about three weeks ago, we had a budget workshop here. And while there was some support voice for the budget, there was concern about its potential impact on the overall tax rate in the city of Lewiston. And it was proposed, and the council was receptive to the idea that we would reduce the local tax commitment by $113,000 in anticipations of some additional funding from the state, which at this point is going to be dependent upon the final budget, which has yet to be adopted by the state. And if that is not forthcoming, then these, we will work with the school committee in reducing our budget by the $113,000. And with that adjustment, the tax rate was reduced to an increase of 10 cents, which is slightly less than 1%. So I do appreciate the input that we received from the council, and I'd like to think that we ended up with a plan that you would find acceptable. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Ray?
The amendment to remove that $113,000, what was the vote on that? Was that eight oh?
The, the school committee voted on that, and my recollection, it was an eight to one vote.
Eight to one?
Yes.
Okay. Not, I wasn't there, so it couldn't be nine?
Uh, excuse me. Let's, let's make it seven to one.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Excuse me, counselor from word two?
No.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
No.
Word one?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of five to two.
Agenda item number eight.
Item number eight, resolve approving the final adjustments to the fiscal year 2020 municipal budget. Requested action to adopt the resolve approving the final adjustments to the fiscal year 2020 municipal budget. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Can we get a brief overview from the fabulous Heather Hunter, or?
Well, I'll start, and Heather can correct me if I make any mistakes.
Equal as fabulous Ed Barrett?
As you know, we start the budget process with a recommended or proposed budget from the city administrator. What you have in front of you now are the adjustments that were take, that, that came forward through the budget process, which was 10 or 12 individual budget meetings plus some recommended adjustments that Finance Director Hunter found or saw as we got more information as the budget process went forward. Basically, the biggest adjustments were on the revenue side, where we increased our estimated revenues by about $228,000 due to some adjustments in state revenue sharing. And that adjustment is under the 2% system, the current system, not the two and a half. Ex-size tax, which we continue to see coming in fairly strongly, and investment earnings. On the expenditure side, we made a large number of individual line item adjustments throughout the budget process. The most notable ones involved, first, eliminating two positions that were in the budget based on last year's budget process, the assistant fire chief position and the planner. And then, second, adding back in a number of positions, including the planning position, although phasing those positions in based on when we anticipated they would either be needed or when we could actually anticipate filling them. So those are the biggest sets of adjustments there. And actually, on the expenditure side, it was about a wash between the items that we reduced and the additional, basically the additional personnel costs that we included in the budget.
Thank you. Any discussion on the council? Counselor Markcott?
All right, could you just remind us the start dates on the positions towards the end of that listing?
The positions that are, that were added back to the budget, a position in the city clerk's office, which is tied to the rental registration program, a fire inspector. City clerk would start July 1st. The fire inspector, I think, starts October. A patrol officer, starting in May, and another one starting in.
October.
December.
Oh, December.
The school resource officer, starting in July. Although that's probably pretty questionable whether we can hire somebody that quickly. A senior accountant position in finance in January. A mechanic in public works, starting in January, and the planner in code, starting in October.
Any further, Counselor Ray?
And Heather, the senior accountant, it's split across general fund and then the three utilities. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number nine.
Item number nine, adoption of municipal budget appropriation resolve for fiscal year 2020. Requested action to approve the municipal budget appropriation resolve for fiscal year 2020. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Ray, seconded by Councilor Lyson. Can we just get an overview of how this differs from what we just did?
Sure. When we started the budget process, the originally proposed tax rate would have been an 85 cent or 2.98% increase. That was made up with 84 cents for the city, 4 cents for the county, and no increase from the schools. As you will recall, at the time we had our initial discussion with the school department, the school committee had not yet fixed on a final budget. Three options were presented. One was, or discussed, one was just at the required local minimum share. One was with a 0% increase, and one was with a 300-some, 400-some thousand dollar increase? 2%, a 2% increase. As the budget process went on, you heard earlier today that the final number came in at about a 10, 10-cent increase. So that was one of the changes between where we started and where we are now. The current number is that, well, we have two options again. Fiscal year 20 budget will result in a tax rate increase of between 83 cents and 47 cents, depending on what happens at the state budget in regard to revenue sharing. With the governor's recommended increase, we would see, we would receive $725,000 in additional city revenue. The budget it resolve is written in such a way that that money would go directly against the tax rate. So that that would basically lower the tax rate, take it from 83 cents to 47 cents. I'm pretty confident that that's going to happen based on what we've been hearing coming out of Augusta, plus the most recent Revenue Forecasting Commission report, which anticipated higher revenues than, than the state had started in their budget process. So if that should happen, city tax rate would increase by 33 cents, or about 2%, schools by 10 cents, or about 1%. The county by 4 cents, or 2.8%. Total increase would be 47 cents, or 1.6%. For the average homeowner in Lewiston, assuming a property value of $125,000 in assessed value, and that, and with a homestead, they would see about a $50.48 increase in their tax bill next year. Also want to point out, there's one other uncertainty in the budget, and that is the funding for the transit system. Our budget includes an additional $53,747 to, dollars to, to, to support the restoration of transit service that was reduced several years ago due to some decisions made by the city of Auburn. That increase is contingent upon city of Auburn approving its share. If they don't, that would also then revert against the tax rate, and that's a 2 to 3 cent impact if that should happen. So that's basically where we are right now. Did I get it right, Heather? Heather says I'm right. That's always the steal of gold approval, so with that, that's kind of just a general summary.
Discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
No.
Word one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to one.
Agenda item number 10?
10. Item number 10, resolve making an appropriation for utility and special revenue funds for municipal budget year 2020. Requested action to approve the resolve making an appropriation for utility and special revenue funds for municipal budget year 2020.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor LaJoy, seconded by Councilor Ray. Overview of this item?
Very briefly, the good news here is that none of the utilities will require a rate increase next year. Although a couple of them, we will have to give some serious consideration to the year after because they're currently operating at a cash deficit at an operating basis and really using prior earnings to subsidize the function going forward. But that's the good news. No rate increase is required. There may be something we're going to have to take a hard look at next year, particularly with the water utility.
Thank you. Discussion on the council? Counselor Markott?
There are three items here. Staying with the first one first. So all three of these expenditure numbers in the resolve expend more than the revenue?
That's correct, although water is the worst, sewer is second, and stormwater is not too bad.
And can you cover the next two further resolved items? Special revenue funds and grants from the state of Maine.
The special revenue funds are primary, that's primarily the recreation fund that supports our recreational programs, and.
It also includes the tax increment financing and the drug forfeiture fund. Those are the three funds that were discussed during the budget workshop. There were no adjustments made to any of those funds as presented in the proposed budget or during the discussions in the workshop.
Do we know if they're growing or shrinking?
The recreation is growing based upon fundraising events, increases in tuition, particularly in, in some of their sporting program. The tax increment financing for budget purposes, purposes has increases because we are incorporating all debt service that is paid, so it's fully budgeted. The drug enforcement is virtually the same as last year. It's just funding different components, particularly in its capital side of things.
Then the grant language basically simply indicates that if we receive a grant that's for $25,000 or less, it's automatically appropriated once the council accepts it. That's just to make life easier on small grants and small things that come to the, to the city for these various programs.
And if it's more?
If it's more, we have to go through the whole process, which includes accepting and appropriating.
Okay.
Further discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 11.
Item number 11, resolve authorizing the use of $3,745,187 from the general fund unassigned fund balance for capital outlay purchases and other one-time costs. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the use of $3,745,189 from the general fund unassigned fund balance for capital outlay purchases and other one-time costs.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Petten Gill. Any discussion on the council? Any comments staff wants to make on this?
Just very quickly to summarize, this is really made up of two categories of items. One is small capital items that were requested by departments that would normally be in the operating budget that have been moved out of the operating budget in order to minimize the budget's impact on the tax rate. And a number of other items that would have been covered in the, in the capital improvement program through bonding, which we are covering instead through fund balance so that we don't have to borrow the money. The biggest item there, I believe, is vehicles for municipal garage at $1,320,000. I will, I always say this, I'll say it again, this is not the ideal way to do things, but given the financial situation, I think sometimes you just have to work with what you have, and I think that's what we've tried to do here.
To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 12.
Item number 12, order authorizing the city administrator to provide city services and funding for city nonprofit organization activities in accordance with the fiscal year 2020 city council approved list. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to provide city services and funding for city nonprofit organization activities in accordance with the fiscal year 2020 city council approved list.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilor Lyson, seconded by Councilor Ray. Anyone want to give an overview of this one?
What you have here is nonprofits that are.
What you have here is nonprofits that are seeking to do an event throughout the year, submit a request for waivers by March 31st, and what you have here is a list of in-kind services being offered from a variety of departments, police, public works, fire, whatever it may be, to support the event that's listed here. So you have a number of them that have come in, and these are all the requests that came forward before March 31st of this year.
Great, thank you. Discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number thirteen.
Item number thirteen, order authorizing the use of $1,500 from the Farrar Fund for costs of basic necessary services for needy individuals. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing the use of up to $1,500 from the Farrar Fund for the expenses of basic necessary services for Lewiston residents where such costs are not covered by other assistance programs and as determined by the Director of Social Services.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Council LaJoy, seconded by Council Ray. Can we get an overview of what the Farrar Fund is?
Yes, this was basically, historically, at some point, someone made a contribution to the city to be used to help offset expenses for individuals who were facing difficult economic circumstances. The fund has, or the principal of fund is $18,551. There is accrued interest that have, has come in over the years that hasn't always been spent, so I think the total balance of the fund is like $31,000. Council Markat asked about that, and I think that's about the number. This would, generally speaking, the principle is not to be expended, we're only, theoretically, your best bet is just spend the interest on the account, but the interest on $31,000 these days is not very high, so we supplement it by using some of the prior year developed interest. And predominantly, this has been used over the years for health-related necessities for individuals who don't qualify to get that covered through general assistance.
Discussion on the council, Council Ray.
So we had previously discussed another fund that was funding a scholarship that had kind of fallen out of, into disrepair, I guess, and I'm just curious, how many of these funds exist within, do we know, and are we keeping track of all of them, and?
Yes, the, primarily the remaining funds, we have a few agency funds, which includes Franklin Pasher trustees, it includes the, let me grab my pen.
Okay. Is there a central spot where we could look for these?
Yes, it's, it's disclosed in the financial statements, but it incorporates all of the agency funds, which are just passed through. The particular scholarship that you're talking about, the deceased widow gave us permission to close that out, which is highly unusual. Most of the funds are cemetery-related. The school department does have their school activity funds, you also have school scholarship funds that run through there. We have a small amount in the holiday parade fund, as well as the senior citizens. Those are kind of the pass-through. And then, the remaining funds are dedicated towards the cemetery maintenance.
Thank you. Further discussion on the council, Council Markat.
So when you say the principal, that would have been the original donation?
Correct.
Do you know what year that, this particular one was initiated?
I have my memo, it's not in the packet.
It says 2008, I think.
It was in the folder. I can send that out. I know it's been there for quite a long time.
It says 2008 on the third, whereas?
I think that's when they adopted the formal do not spend the principal.
Right. No.
Because to earn interest from $18,000 to $31,000 would have taken quite a bit of time.
Yes, I mean, it was, it's been there since I've been here, so, and I think it was here at least-
When the interest rates were much higher.
Right, at least ten years before that.
Most of those funds around the state were actually created prior to the general assistance program, back when municipalities operated, many municipalities had a poor farm. And I think Lewiston did have one.
Yes.
Yep.
Up on the street.
Further discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number fourteen.
Item number fourteen, order authorizing the city administrator to execute a license with LePage Bakery Cedar Street LLC to allow for maintenance of the city property adjacent to the canal. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to execute a license with LePage Bakery Cedar Street LLC to allow for maintenance of the city property adjacent to the canal.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Council Lyson, seconded by Council Pettingill. Can we get an overview of this item?
Just very briefly, I think you're all aware that LePage Bakery does own a facility on the other side of the canal, off, over off of Cedar Street, that historically, for many years, they maintained the banks of the canal, basically mowed the grass and made sure the trees were in decent shape and didn't have a lot of scrub growing along it. A number of years ago, at least two or, three or four years ago, Link?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, Brookfield decided that they didn't want anyone in there doing that, since it was Brookfield company property associated with the canals. So they effectively told LePage to stop doing the maintenance. The level of maintenance, as you probably noticed, deteriorated dramatically, where LePage was basically mowing that area and keeping it neat, probably on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, Brookfield was doing it once or twice a summer. Brookfield would like to, once again, start maintaining that area. We think that's a good idea, because otherwise, we would have to do it.
LePage wants to-
LePage, excuse me, LePage wants to start doing it? The biggest issue, obviously, is whether there's any liability, and in the license agreement, they are assuming liability for any of their employees or contractors who may be injured on that property. So that gives us some comfort that they will be taking care of it, and we will not necessarily have any liability as a result of their maintenance of our property.
Thank you. Discussion on the council, Council Markat.
I see Dave is here. I was wondering if we had any plans along the canal for projects in this coming year?
Well, actually, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Dale to address that, because he and his staff have been taking a look at that in conjunction with Dave and some other folks.
Yeah, in conjunction with Dave and, and the assistant city administrator, we did come up with a plan. We'll be talking about that as part of the LCP. I think there's $100,000 in the LCP to augment some money that already exists today. The plan is predominantly down along Oxford Street and then down by the Red Shed on Cross Canal One, to really clean that area up, clean up the end of Smart Pain Park. There's an area in there we might want to level out a little bit, clean them up, put, put new fencing in, that's more aesthetic fencing, take down the chain link. For us, just to clean it out, we're going to destroy the chain link fence anyway, so this is the time to put back something that's more aesthetic on the Oxford Street side. We have a plan to replace the, kind of the deteriorated guardrail with more national park-style guardrail. So that's all in some funds that exist today, plus some funds that we have in the LCP, and we're hoping to get that done in the summer, if we can get a contractor in there.
And the new bridge is complete?
Yep. Where do we end?
The, the new bridge?
It'll just go beyond, the new, oh, the new bridge is, when will it be complete?
Yeah, it's complete, correct.
It is complete, they should have paved, the continuous paving, I haven't been down there, but they should have cleaned up last week. Yeah, they did a little bit of touch-up work, but that should be all done now, if not. I drove it a month ago, but I get to move the barricades, so.
So we'll be able to showcase that for our upcoming event.
And this will continue, actually, to clean up, our hope is to continue down as far as Chestnut, so we get both sides of the bridge and go a little beyond that. That's, that's our hope, if we get the funding.
Further discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen, other business and committee appointments. There are two items regarding committee appointments. The first one is an appointment to the Complete Streets Committee. The mayor is recommending Roger Fuller for the citizen, I'm sorry, is appointing Roger Fuller for the citizen appointment and reappointing, excuse me, Council Lyson for the council seat.
That's correct.
The other appointment, which is the mayor's nomination and does require council confirmation, is to a vacancy for a tenant resident on the Lewiston Housing Authority Board of Directors. Mayor Cludier is recommending Anita Stevens, who resides on Spofford Street and is the tenant council president at Meadowview.
That's correct.
And so that would require a council vote for, to confirm that appointment.
So discussion on the council for either of those appointments. Council Markat.
I heard you say reappointment, so is there like a term to Complete Streets from date certain to date certain?
There is, and actually, I apologize, it's not a reappointment for Mr. Fuller, it is filling a vacancy. There was a resignation from a member, and so Mr. Fuller's appointment is filling a vacancy. Council Lyson's appointment is a reappointment. And I do not-
That term is coming up.
Right, usually, they would go council term to council term, anytime there's a council representative to a committee. I think this was just one of the, the committees that failed to get on our list when we met in, in January for the new year, so we're just kind of playing catch-up, I think, with this committee.
Okay. Are we voting on these tonight, or is this informational tonight?
So the Roger Fuller and Council Lyson are informational. The board, Lewiston Housing Authority Board requires a vote. So I'd prefer to do it tonight.
So the first one doesn't require a vote?
No, it's just informational.
And the second one is happening tonight?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve, it's Anita Stevens?
Yes.
As a tenant rep to the Lewiston Housing Authority Board of Directors. I'll second the motion.
So a motion by Council Lyson, seconded by Council LaJoy. Discussion on the council? To the public? Back to the council? Call the roll.
Counselor from word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
And Kathy, just to, just to sort of give some information on the Anita Stevens appointment, it needs to be somebody that lives in a Lewiston Housing Authority residence.
Right.
And so I ask for a recommendation from the Lewiston Housing Authority President, Executive Director.
From the Executive Director, yes. On their board, there are two tenant representatives, and she is filling one of those seats.
Thank you.
Agenda item number sixteen.
Go ahead.
Item number sixteen, any other city business counselors or others may have relating to Lewiston city government.
I don't know if, if Council Ray was going to do this, but we might want to introduce to the-
That was my plan.
Great, I'll turn it over to you, then.
So my school group committee report was going to be about last night's meeting, in which we talked about substance use, and now we're going to review the policies associated with that. We also reviewed policies regarding retention, promotion, acceleration, graduation requirements, child sexual abuse prevention and response, and assignment of students to schools. We also are welcoming our new superintendent during July 1st, but he's already here. Todd Finn and his wife, Dani, have joined us tonight. I invited them because they are Ward Three residents, woo-hoo! So they came to join and just see how things are going here. I'm sure they're also very excited to vote in this May 14th election for the school budget referendum, which I'll toss to Kathy, Kathy, because I don't know any more details about the time.
Sure, yes, so thank you. So Tuesday, a week from today, May 14th, we have the annual school budget referendum election. All voting citywide will take place at Longley Elementary School. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. Absentee ballots for this election are available. Residents who have already obtained an absentee ballot are able to turn them back in starting tomorrow, since the city council has now adopted the school budget. There is a state law that says they cannot turn their absentee ballots back in until the city council has approved the budget, which occurred tonight. So any residents who are currently holding their absentee ballots are welcome to turn them in starting tomorrow morning. They need to be turned in up until Tuesday night, election night at 8:00 p.m. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is Thursday at 4:00 p.m. by state laws. So any resident who would like to obtain an absentee ballot is welcome to call the city clerk's office or come in today or by, by Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday or Thursday by 4:00 p.m. to obtain an absentee ballot. But yes, the election will be held next Tuesday, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Longley.
Is there in-person absentee?
There is in-person absentee, but again, that also deadline closes Thursday at 4:00 p.m. So we'll have a voting booth upstairs in the second floor hallway, like we normally do. There are three questions on the ballot. There is a sample ballot on the city's website, if folks would like to look at those questions, three yes or no questions, and they can study that prior to voting if they'd like.
Anything else from the council?
Just, we're still retarded. After watching us in action here, you're still, you're going to be sticking around.
He has a year-long lease, he can't leave.
Very, very efficient profession, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion by Council Lyson, seconded by Council Ray. All those in favor? Thank you.